Like to open up this meeting and like to welcome everybody here. Hopefully, this will be a very productive evening for our towns. Let's stand and blow this up with prayer. Father God, we've just come before you this evening, Lord, and we want to thank you so much again for being our special Lord and Savior. I ask, Lord, that you just put your hands on this meeting. Put your hands on each individual that's inside City Hall tonight, and nothing but your will and productivity will come out of this. We, Father, we want to thank you so much for opening up the different doors for each one of us as we go through this world, and I ask, Lord, that we just have the wisdom and knowledge to step through the doors at the right time. Again, Father, we just thank you for all the gracious things that you allow us, and we please, if you would, forgive us when we fail. We love and praise you. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Debbie, can you do a roll call and purify our floor?
Here.
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 Raymond?
Here.
All right, we have a four.
All right, let's go. Mr. Slagel, would you like to get us started?
Get my timer going here, because I think sometimes it leaves something to be desired. First of all, does the agenda has to be approved before this meeting starts? Would the attorney like to say something? I'd like to copy the financials that y'all get, and maybe should be a copy back there where people sign in, so they can get the financials. The agenda was posted to the town's webpage. I know we got a temporary clerk right now, but that's been standard practice as required by the law. The house that's burned down on the corner of West Moore and Norris Brooks is grown up. There's trash is there. It's real close to the school. Little kids coming by there. Do we have more important things to be condemned, or we're done beside that thing right there? Using the firm of Castellano, Lino and Associates, are they the ones that installed the county system in the town of Vivian? And if so, is there a personal relationship with some of those employees for the mayor? But my main point is, has the mayor thrown, the mayor pro temp under the school bus by abdicating his office in order to let the fault be placed upon the mayor pro temp? Authorize the CPA firm to do additional audit procedures. What gives? Last year, budget audit fees were twenty-five thousand. In actual, there was sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. That's about forty thousand dollars more. There's got to be some reason that's malfeasance in office. It's theft on the employees' part, but they're getting paid to do a job, and you gotta have CPA firm come in and straighten out the mess. The town hired a new bookkeeper recently, and she was charged, arrested for theft and malfeasance in office. She only been here a couple of months. How long has our clerk been here, and the mayor? And to put her in jail for stealing five hundred and twenty-nine dollars? When you look at these audit fees for last year and what they're gonna be for this year, that's just terrible. And I want to know how much the audit fees are gonna be this year? How much the special audit fees are gonna be? How much you gonna pay the Castellano people to? You put all that together, and we have all these people here working, doing their jobs supposedly, and now we got to pay for it again? If that ain't malfeasance in office, Mayor, you might have to sleep on it to figure it out now.
Still got time?
I'll give you some time today.
Thank you. Always good to hear from you. Ronnie, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ronnie Festivan, three twenty-two Rebel Road, Vivian, Louisiana. There's been some discussion lately about meals, free meals, being given out at the hospital. I am speaking tonight, and those are legitimate questions. Let me say that people that have raised those, taxpayers that raised that issue, that's legitimate. We pay for that hospital, and you need to know where your money's going. So I'm not here to defend it. I always believe that the more information we have, the better decisions we can make. So I'm just here to share something. I'm here as an individual board member on the hospital board. I do not represent the board tonight. I'm not speaking for the entire board. I'm speaking as only one board member. I had a conversation today with our hospital board attorney and our hospital CEO. The practice of free meals to police officers has been going on for some time. It was an executive decision made by the CEO. It is not prohibitive under law or under any current rule of the Ethics Commission. I have asked, along with others, that our board attorneys submit a request to the Ethics Board and ask for an opinion of that. Also requested that the CEO of the hospital, his thoughts on it, and we had a conversation today. He said that the practice will continue because it is not prohibitive, that he views it as an executive decision under his purview as CEO of the hospital. Now, whether or not the Ethics Commission agrees with him will be another question. But I wanted to share that with you today, so that you will know that it is a practice, it is going on, it will continue until such time that we hear that it is prohibitive. The hospital board is aware of it. We will discuss it at our next board meeting. Wanted you to know that. It just helps, the more you know, the better informed you are, the better decisions that we make. And I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan?
Susan Cross, one oh four Country Club Road, Vivian. What I'm here, Debbie first, thank you for stepping up. We appreciate that. Shows your dedication and your loyalty to the town. Council members, in a rough three years, we thank you. Mayor Van Shuyt, over the past two weeks, there's been some controversy, some actions that have been taken. You and I spoke about three years ago when you came to my house, when you were made aware of that I was considering filing a recall. Was investigating into that. At this time, I honestly feel you have lost the trust of the citizens of this town. And I do, we, people I've also spoke with, we asked that you resign as mayor of Vivian at this time, time, and let our mayor pro temp take over from here until the election time to reinforce the trust back into it, that we know things are being handled properly. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we have no monthly financial point, or I'm sorry, financial report at this time. I think everybody up here can understand why.
That's not the name.
Have we talked to Jay Simpson about this either?
We have.
Do we know another thing?
We have a lot of paperwork in our possession that we have to fill out. We are going to get resumes or get some of their, I guess, some of their suggestions who might come up here. My instructions were that either Doug, Debbie, or myself, two of the three, will sit down and look at those, whether it's made or it doesn't matter to me, but two of the three will, and we will try to build the one they recommend. If it doesn't work, if it doesn't work for a week, we can just say, I'm sorry, this isn't working. They will send us another one. So yes, we have contacted them. I believe the lady's name was Becky. Got all the documentation written down. I believe we have forms in, I know I have them in my possession. I think Debbie has them in her possession. If you guys would like one, you're more than welcome to have them. If anybody would like to sit in and request, I have no problem with it.
I think we would.
That would be fine.
And who will be overseeing to see that she's doing a good job, or he or she, over this week's time?
What we have done, I believe per the instructions from Cook and Morehart, we were asked to get ahold of Castellano and Associates. I did call Cricket. I said I would think that if there was somebody that could come up here two days a week and oversee and look over somebody's shoulder, I think that would be in the best interests of our town. If there's anything that you guys think should be done differently, I have no problem with it.
Well, we'll get to that whenever it comes up on the agenda.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July ninth, two thousand and eighteen year?
I make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye, I've not received the minutes.
They're not in that folder?
I mean, I haven't had time to go over them with them being in the folder. We're used to getting them in time to read them to see if they're correct. So I'm gonna say no.
And then, Board of Alderman considered the mayor's recommendation to hire Debbie Williamson as interim clerk. I am sure you're aware, the former town clerk has resigned her position on August third, two thousand and eighteen. Louisiana law requires us to have a clerk due to the fact that we will be having an election, and a new mayor will take office on January first, two thousand and nineteen. I believe the appropriate thing to do is hire an interim clerk until the new mayor takes office. This will allow the new mayor to appoint who they, he, or she wishes to assume that role. And I am requesting that Debbie Williamson be appointed as the interim town clerk. Do I have a motion and a second to appoint Debbie Williamson as the interim town clerk?
I'll make that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Do we need to set our salary?
It's already been done.
We're gonna, we're gonna get to that. Well, he, what he did was, I'll just break y'all. I think he's already given her a raise as a water clerk at this point to whatever, I think it's sixteen.
Sixteen fifty.
Sixteen fifty, that's going to be introduced today at the ordinance. Be introduced later on in our agenda, but it won't be voted on until September. But he's already given her a raise as a water clerk, so she wouldn't be working for fifteen dollars and fifty cents for a whole month or two.
Give Debbie a plate. All right. So we've got the motion and the second to accept Debbie. Bobby?
To you.
Bobby Smith. It's your turn, code enforcement.
All right, how you doing?
Hey, Bobby.
There were two that you'd asked that they put on the, they're already on the list. I just haven't finished them.
No, that's, this is one that, the house burned down, also, Mr. Dickie's property.
We have four seventeen East Tennessee.
Yeah.
Letting do it.
Okay.
This one, I have on there. Three ten West Georgia.
They're already on the list. I just haven't finalized.
Three ten?
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the list. I think so, because Mr. Dickie's property.
No, that's not Mr. Dickie's property.
Three oh one.
Yeah, this is the one I was bringing tonight. I'll tell you, I need to put on that.
Which one's wrong?
This one just right.
That's right. Across from three oh one, West Georgia.
So it's three ten West Georgia?
It's empty, Jimmy.
Right.
I had asked you to rush it to.
I have a complaint on that residence, that house. Private.
I thought it was three oh one, so it's not actually on the agenda. We'll have to wait till next month to put it on.
Can we amend the agenda?
If you wish to have some. If you wish to amend the agenda by standing, make a motion to amend and expand the agenda to include three ten West Georgia.
Well, I would like to do that.
So your motion is to expand and amend the agenda.
To include three ten.
Three ten West Georgia, that would be a recommendation for condemnation.
Right.
Can I have a motion and a second to expand the agenda to include three ten West Georgia?
I made that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Before you vote on it, Louisiana law requires that a public hearing be held, or anybody wishing to speak in favor or against adding this motion is right to come forward.
Okay, would anybody like to come forward and discuss the three ten West Georgia property? Yes, okay. As I said, when I first came up here today, I think the first call of business, you're supposed to accept the agenda or modify it at that time. You can't do it after the meeting starts. If you didn't do it to start with, I think this ought to be tabled for the next meeting, because you're not following the law, and our city attorney should know what that is. Am I right, Doug?
You can amend the agenda anytime you wish to. In my opinion, we've done it constantly.
I know you've done it before.
And you can, we do it all the time.
But why didn't you accept the agenda as it was written to start with? Thank you.
So.
So are we still good to go?
Now you need to vote on it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, now.
The next one is the.
Now, let's say so, it was voted to amend it and put it on the agenda, okay? So it's on the agenda. Now we need to, I guess, hear from you, and then we'll come back and make a motion to put it.
Right.
Basically, start the condemnation process, okay?
Three ten, it's, I did inspection of it. The outside, it's wood, it's rotting in, need to be replaced. That window's out in the front and the side. Also, there's trash in the backyard and the porch. As you can see, it was deteriorating. So, and also, I got a call from Constable Pondexter. He went inside the house, and he was one of the complaints. It was unfit to deliver. So I went inside also, and you'll see, I took pictures. Got holes in the wall, the floors, got leaky ceilings with leaking inside.
Who owns the property?
David and Susan, they're them.
Who?
David and Susan, they're them.
Okay, so your, your suggestion is that we need to put this on the condemnation?
Yes, and I went back, I, I, I just, I, yeah. I, I went back to get a follow-up on it. Trash had been picked up in the backyard, and had replaced one one in the front. And on the east side, still one was out. Rural still hadn't been fixed. And I hadn't really talked with him. He hadn't called me or anything, but I did, did level that out, I sent him.
So should, like?
The motion should be to recommend that the town attorney take the necessary step to move forward with the condemnation process.
Do I have a motion and a second to allow the town attorney to move forward with the different protocols to start this property on the condemnation?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Any opposition? Are all in favor? Any opposition?
I have one more, Dan, ninety-three thirty-three House Road. I think that's only condemnation this. And finally, the property has been bought. I have a copy of the translation I got to give you. I'll give you a copy, so you can put it in the folder.
Preachers? Jerry Jones?
Jerry Jones. He sent me a copy. I gotta give you a copy.
And with house burn? Did they clean it up?
Yeah.
They tore it down.
Went back, that, they, they got it all cleaned out. I told them all the.
They had tore it down, and it was being cleaned up.
So twelve months later, they are making progress.
They're making progress, and understanding he's supposed to be putting, trying to put a double wire there. I think, made everything though. I think the thing was, it was the ownership of property.
It was right in the corner of the road.
Got it, that was Wilson, couldn't do anything because he wasn't.
So Jerry Jones is accepting the responsibility now?
No, 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 he sold the property.
Oh, he sold it?
Willis, okay. He sent me a copy of the translation. I got it, I got it, I got it, and I give you a copy, put it in the folder.
Okay, so do I have a?
We don't need to do anything.
No, no, you don't need to.
Bobby to monitor?
There's no need to make the motion. He's just giving us about the other one. Basically, I know not to take any other steps right now, and not spend any lawyer fees because apparently that's hanging itself.
Okay, but you will continue to monitor the property? And next, we have, is it four seventeen East Tennessee?
Yeah, we're down to that.
No, I've got, that one is. Yeah, that, that'd be, you have a curator on that. Sam, where are you? Mr. Goodman's present?
Yeah.
You leave?
Still, still same. The property is still looking the same, that's the picture of it. I just recently taken, uh, dated events. No improvements have been done.
We haven't?
All property.
Curator gave a report, and basically says that he was appointed, Samuel Goodman was appointed as curator. He represents the owners. He said that after the government, he checked cattle parish tax assessors site, avails to records in Nexus Nexus site. Shows the owners or possible interested parties. Marshall L. Broadway, Bobby Ray Lovett Senior, Bobby Ray Lovett Junior, Charlotte Jones, that he had been following attempts on August sixth. A two thousand and eighteen private email was sent to the address, address is shown. Giving notice of the proceedings, copies of all information given by the town of Vivian. Letter to Marshall Broadway at six oh six North One U Street was delivered and left in the mailbox. Letter to Bobby Ray Lovett Senior at three three six Red Bud Lane. And Vivian was delivered and left in the mailbox on August eighth. The letter to Bobby Ray Lovett Junior at four one seven East Tennessee was returned vacant. Marked vacant, and the letter to Charlotte Jones to two twenty-five East Louisiana is being returned. Marked vacant. On August sixth, he requested a legal notice run in the cattle citizen. Given notice from condemnation proceedings together with the date. Gave his telephone number. He says not to overlook, under some caution, he had called the telephone number of Bobby Lovett Junior, but the number was not in service. He also called another number for Marshall Broadway, received no answer. As of Monday, August thirteenth, he's not heard from any person claiming to interest in the property, whereas he's a lawful point curator. He requests the town of Vivian offering any deference appeals to the absentee owner of the property may be entitled to, in any relief. To be honest, I think what we know is Bobby Lovett Senior's deceased, and the heirs never really did succession. Bobby went missing, and he just kind of walked away. We've been working on this a couple of years ago concerning some vehicles. So if it's appropriate, if anybody wishes to, then we need to make a motion to condemn it, and we'll give the standard fifteen days to remove the deed.
Do I have a motion and a second to start the?
No, no, no. To condemn it.
To condemn it.
I make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
The mayor from the side, yes.
Bobby.
Okay, Bobby, I believe the next property is seven seventeen North Hickory.
All right, seven seventeen, been working on it for a while. Sent letters out to the owners and haven't been able to get anything done and put on the condemnation bid. I've been monitoring it, and it's been looking just like that. The day, the first day I started working on this case.
Doug, you have an update on that?
Curator Sam Goodman was appointed to represent the absentee owners on this. He was appointed on April thirteenth of two thousand and eighteen. Seen this, the property took photographs. After his appointment, he reviewed the cattle parish tax assessors website, avails records of cattle parish, and led to Nexus showing possible owners and interested parties. Could be Richard Norman and or Leslie Thompson, Dean Wood, and Eddie Hocke. The following efforts were made by the interested parties to notify the interested parties on August sixth. Private email was sent to the addresses shown, given notice of the proceedings, and provided copies of all information that was given to him by the town of Vivian. The letter to six three four one Old Salem Road was returned undelivered, marked unable to forward, returned to sender. Letter to three nine hundred Boyd Road was returned undelivered, marked insufficient address, unable to forward. And the letter to seven one seven North Hickory was returned undelivered, marked vacant, unable to forward. Approximately, on approximately August sixth, two thousand and eighteen, he requested a legal notice to be run in the cattle citizen concerning these condemnation proceedings together with the date and time and location of the hearing and his telephone number and email address. Out of a bunch of caution, he also made a telephone call to Leslie Thomas, two oh five seven eight three one on August thirteenth, received no answers. Emails were also sent to four potential addresses for Leslie Thompson, but none had given responses. On Monday, August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, he said he received a call from two individuals who saw the advertised for the cattle citizen and were interested in purchasing the property and bringing it up the code. Did the individual claim to have the current legal interest in the property? As the appointed curator, he requests the town of Vivian offer any deference appeals absentee owners of this property may be entitled to, request dependence to be granted even belief. If anybody is here present that has an interest, they can go forward, but I don't think anybody is in the presence. That's the report.
Okay, so should I ask for a motion and a second to start the condemnation process on?
Your motion ordered to condemn it this week for the final hearing. So the motion orders will be to condemn the property, seven one seven North Hickory.
Do I have a motion and a second to condemn the seven one seven North Hickory property?
I make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor? Any other names? Okay, Bobby, this next one, I'm gonna be a messenger. I don't even feel comfortable being the messenger, but I was asked to call and tell the council that Willis Jones is unable to be here tonight. He is caught at work. I think we've been discussing this one for close to two years, year and a half?
I, I, I talked with him, uh, late last, almost an hour ago, and he told me the same thing, that he wasn't coming and, uh, he's still repairing, so.
Well, I, I, I think that's gonna be a, a council decision.
This is the most, yeah, this is the most young one that we've continued, I think last time we continued, my records show till today.
Exactly how long have we, I mean, I know it's been a while, but like exactly?
Uh, this property's been going on for condemnation for, I had, my files opened in two thousand fifteen, so it's been, there was two properties. He cleaned up one, this is the other one, at one twenty-two, that hasn't been cleaned up, I think it's pretty much a mobile home or something mobile.
Mobile home, he told us to repair, am I correct?
So, I mean, what, what is he asking? I mean, when he contacted, just to continue?
He told me to, uh, wait, he didn't say continue, he just said he was going, his, his, his thing is to, uh, repair.
But has he made any repairs?
Uh, no.
No.
Uh, that's, that's.
I just, I say there's no.
See, he done a lot of cleaning up.
Right, he, I mean, you can tell that it's clean.
Right. I, I would think we should continue it. Uh, he, he's put a lot of time into that property, I mean, if we go and condemn it, we gonna lose all of that.
I just wanna be able to have a certain time limit, because this is going on three years, I, I agree, I think you need to be able to, but I think at some point. It's gotta stop. But he is making improvements, so.
How would you approach the council with, with this?
Well, that's up to them, y'all can make a motion to continue in another month, two months. Um, y'all can table it and, y'all can go ahead and condemn it. I can make whatever motion y'all want to.
Maybe it's your word, I'm gonna give you that call.
Want to table it and ask that the code involved, code involved to continue to monitor. I guess, you know, you talk about a financial issue, condemn it, and he's done a lot of work. Then, you know, Tommy and we're gonna be out money in the near future of having to tear down, uh, a mobile home. Now, we have spent some time and effort in these meetings, talking to this guy, and he normally is always here, in here. And has seemed to make some type of improvement every month, but it's up to you guys.
But the yard, the yard area is overall clean?
It's clean, and I think, uh, what you see there are the, uh.
This doesn't have a front door?
And stuff is where he's been painting out from underneath. But anything else, he hadn't, uh, he keeps it, the yard, the whole property, the other piece of property that goes with that, he keeps that note, uh. And like I say, he said it's been hot, he got kind of, got kind of under the weather. Uh, and there was been some hot, hot, hot weather, and he's, but he did say he's, his intention is to repair it and really, uh, probably live in.
Can he put some wood or something over the door?
Uh, I would, I would tell him he need to do something with this door. Uh, since he kind of started, uh, under, under, uh, the undercover work there, uh, for some, uh, put a piece of plywood over that door. And, uh, I think if that would be sufficient to, you know.
I mean, 'cause the windows, it looks like the, they're, the windows are all there.
Oh, yeah, the windows are all there.
I mean, if he can just cover the doors for, to keep anybody out of it, and then if he'll just make progress.
If you notice that, uh, I think that's, uh, I want to paint the wood, uh, he put that door on there, that door wasn't there.
Right.
Hadn't been there on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you need a motion and a second to table this for, uh, another, another?
I make, I make a motion that we table it and, and put code enforcement to monitor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
So this will be just laying on the table until it's brought back.
Okay, Bobby, is there anything else, or does anybody have any?
I gave you your, your check now, so.
Does anybody have any questions for, for Bobby?
I got a question. I see, I see two ten, it was driving, I see eight, that's the same, two ten, is, is all those they were driving same address?
Let's see, yeah, yeah.
And that's Marv?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Uh, what page that?
That's the second page. It's, you talk Marv, why she didn't go down two ten?
Marv, I didn't get a good address on that, uh.
Is that all the same property?
No, 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 two ten, it's the next to, uh, Melvin.
Okay, that's the house, that's the house next to Melvin?
Yeah, it's the house next to Melvin.
Okay.
And, uh, it's been in, and, uh, it's been cut, looking good. Right, now, the other one, uh, that was, that's Marv Watson. He's been having some stuff out there, he's been out there that he don't need out there, so.
She's not gonna have, whether she wants, she's just gonna be this, she will.
Fifteen million? Oh, no, I, well, I gave him a verbal, uh, but you gotta understand, when you dealing with Marv. It just, you gotta understand him, I mean, without him getting hosed out. So, uh, I have that connection with him, that I can get him to do something if I just verbally talk to him, and he'll, he'll be able to help me. You know, Mr. Pickett complained today, we, we did. I'll clear you.
That's all I got.
Okay.
We're good.
About to burn that house by the school, there's action on that.
What now?
The house that burned on the north, Cypress and, uh.
That's on the gun, that next?
Not sure, but one of them, somebody found a bank.
Is there anybody else that has any questions for, for Bobby?
I will say, uh, two oh two. It's, I got a, uh, summons served and, uh, I think court date is, uh, September the eleventh, I believe.
Okay, and he hasn't cleaned anything up ditch wise?
He, he, he placed, uh, two windows, and he did cut a little bit of the ditch, and I could, I could verbally, I mean, I could, uh, you know, just see in the ditch that it was dry.
So we don't have any?
No, there's no smell.
Okay. But is there any evidence of sewage in the ditch?
Uh, if it is, it's dry, it's really, yeah.
I mean, I don't know what we can do anyway, so. I mean, I guess really, if there is, I don't know what we can do, because.
Uh, no, uh, 'cause what it is, it, 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 if it does, I mean, it's raining, it washes down and will crawl the street down to that. Right next to the property of the school, and it's going to the drain or something.
But the water meter has, the meter itself has been pulled?
No, the meter hasn't been pulled, the water's been cut off.
Can we get the meter pulled to ensure that he's not running any water, because those, those meters can be manipulated to have water run through?
I can get with, uh, Tommy and we can see if we can get the meter, you want, the meter just pull itself.
Does that allow the property?
No. This is right behind the school on the corner where our kids are walking and being picked up and dropped off for school every morning, and there's raw sewage in the ditch.
And now what he tells me, he's not using the water, he's, uh, I don't know, he's going different places.
I, I, I just feel like we need to pull the meter, I mean, if, if we have this issue, the, I mean, in any issue like this, the meter should be pulled to ensure that there's not water. Two oh two West Mississippi.
That's that house right there on the corner that we, that, behind?
Right behind the elementary school.
I agree, I agree with, I mean, if it's got raw sewage, and if he's somebody jacking with the water, the meter need to be pulled to make sure that, that they don't, they don't do that. I agree with you.
I get with, uh, some, uh, uh.
All right, Bobby, well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Chief?
Okay.
It's your time to shine.
And we're gonna specify that?
This is Carolyn Robinson, chief of life for part-time dispatch, um, worked, how many years with Sheriff Office?
I retired from cattle.
Right, she retired from the, right, from the cattle sheriff office.
That was two years ago, and all I ever do is sit in my chair, so I decided I needed something to do, to keep me from turning to a vegetable.
They got a pretty nice chair over there.
Do they?
I think so. TV, and, and he could, doesn't he? New TV?
No, neither.
Oh, you need a new chair, oh.
But anyway, she, she already, uh, has experience on having one in NCIC computer, I think she'd be an asset, and I'd like to recommend it for the part-time.
I make the motion to hire hers part-time dispatch.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Some of you may know, uh, Dawn, uh, Dawn applied for part-time police officer. Uh, I've been doing Dawn a long time, her father retired from Dodge City, he was a major, retired as a major, so she has a long history, uh, law enforcement. But she chose a different career, she didn't want, but she still had that desire to be a police officer, because she was raised in a home of a police officer. Uh, we can use another part-time female. Now, she hasn't, we couldn't get it in in time, she hadn't taken her psych test yet, she goes to her, soon as we can get her in the tech one, she gotta go Alexandra, uh, on Wednesday. So what I'm gonna do is hire her pending her psych evaluation.
Okay.
You gotta do both?
About, yes, yeah, I'm a part-time miss and.
Hey, I'm gonna tell you, um, I'll tell you.
Go ahead.
We know.
Because of her age, we gave her a PT test, uh, the other morning, and she did most, better than most of the tests.
So the, uh, motion to be to hire Ms. Piazza in commission?
Pending, pending the outcome of the psych. Do I have a motion and a second pending the outcome of the psych evaluation Wednesday to hire Mr.?
I make that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Good luck Wednesday?
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Forever after.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if some of you know Vernon, uh, yeah, we, we actually hired Vernon, Vivian's police officer, we sent him to the academy years ago. And he went on to, uh, still a career with cattle sheriff office, Vernon has retired from the sheriff office and wanna come back home to help us out. He's already, he don't have to take his psych test, he already has one on file with the sheriff office and, uh, so we can use it and, I'm welcoming him back. Cool, y'all do the same?
Also post-serve.
Right.
Do we have any, does anybody have any questions?
Danny knows the streets of Vivian, so we'll let him explain.
Do we have, uh, a motion and a second to hire Vernon as a?
In commission.
In commission? Part-time police officer at thirteen dollars?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
And then Ayes, the second, do you need?
Hang, hang on, just one second. Full time?
Full time.
Do we have a motion and a second to hire Mr. McDaniels full-time?
I make that motion, I make that motion.
Thirteen dollars, now, a second? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
So, I wanna make sure we got that, Ayes might have motion, Ayes in second. He's switched.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Brian, you got anything else? Okay. All right, moving along here. What I have to ask the board of Alderman to consider engaging Costellano and Associates. This will be for the purpose of providing assistance, so that the town's accounting records will be ready in a timely manner for our next audit. Okay, this is affirmed that Cricket Festervan, Cricket Terry is associated with, they have done some work for the town, and I believe it was quite satisfactory. Again, they have provided these services to us before, I am requesting a motion and a second to engage Costellano and Associates. And authorize me to sign and execute, execute the engagement letter.
Okay, I have some questions.
Okay.
Um.
Probably a motion is second, but then you can legally discuss.
Okay.
I make the motion.
Anybody wanna give a second? This, this is to bring up backup, to make sure our bookkeeping system is done correctly.
I understand that, but I have questions, and if I can't ask questions, then I'm not gonna second something that I'm not.
Law patrol's order, normally you make the motion second, then you can discuss it and ask questions.
I, I don't feel comfortable making it second, so.
Y'all discuss it now, okay?
Okay, well, this is my concerns. Um, I feel like that, well, number one, I guess I'm gonna ask this question, why are we authorizing our mayor pro tem to sign and execute the engagement letter? With Cook and Morehart to perform additional agreed-upon procedures, but we're asking the mayor to authorize on the other take?
Well, if you want, we can authorize the mayor to protect to do it all.
But this is the mayor's job.
Okay, I just didn't feel comfortable, do I need to, should I respond? Okay, I, I just really didn't feel comfortable in a piece of what we're, we're asking, uh, Cook and Morehart to do. I have no problem with it being done, I have no problem at all with it being done, I just did not wanna put my name on it.
But is that not your job as the mayor to sign engagement letters, and you're agreeing with what, I mean, you agreed in the meeting that we had with what we decided to do? But then now you wanna put it on Pro Tem, I mean, I feel like that if you're not comfortable doing this, then we should let our mayor Pro Tem step in as mayor, and that you should resign.
Well, I'm probably not gonna do that, but I, you're entitled to your thoughts. And if you don't want, if you would like the mayor Pro Tem to sign this, I'm, I'm fine with it.
No, I'm just needing to understand.
Cooking, somebody needs to engage Costellano and Associates as a, as a backup plan for when we get this temporary bookkeeper in here.
But I feel like we need to engage in getting this, this other black eye taken care of before we try to move forward.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
But you're refusing to sign this engagement letter, and you're asking our mayor Pro Tem to do that.
Okay.
So expla- make, I mean, help us to understand.
I just tried to explain to you, I don't feel comfortable in following, I, I actually think, to, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, with the way that our clerk has been treated. I'm hoping our community doesn't wind up in a lawsuit, and I would just as soon not have my name involved in it.
But you are the mayor of this community.
I know what I am.
Your name is involved in it.
Ninety-nine point nine percent of everything that comes at me, I agree with and I sign. I just don't feel comfortable here, if you or the council or the mayor Pro Tem, I, I'm all for you.
You're all for what?
I'm all, if you wanna follow up on this, I have no objection.
Well, we have no choice but to follow up on it, this was not something that we wanted to do, this is a position that we've been put in because of your decisions. You hired this bookkeeper, you brought it to the council to hire the clerk, so this, that, what we're having to authorize is because of you.
Did I not bring the clerk up here for five hours one day and feed everybody and give everybody?
I was not included in that.
I wasn't either.
That was one of those things that I was not included.
So, Annie, do we need to keep this flowing, or what do we need?
We're, we're asking questions that we won't answer. We're, we're asking questions that we won't answer to.
I'm trying to answer.
That the community deserves these answers.
I have no problem answering the questions for the community.
Well, answer them.
I just did. I do not feel comfortable with a little bit of a, maybe a witch hunt on the clerk.
A witch hunt?
So anyhow.
Well, you do realize...
But these finances have got to be straightened out.
I agree.
This doesn't have anything to do with the clerk, okay?
I, this is how, as I said.
This is not a witch hunt. This is trying to get our finances in shape and in order. There is no witch hunt to it.
That's the process that I'm trying to do.
You're turning this into a witch hunt.
Should we move on to the next thing?
You, you, you can. I would suggest or say this, you know, that, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about, because I'm sure the public wants to hear about what's going on in the timeline, but I was going to do it when we get down a little bit later. But you do remember the meeting we had, this is one of the suggestions we had with the CPA, was to hire Castellano and Associates to engage them. Now, to do that, y'all are going to have to make a motion and second and accept.
Well, this is what...
I know that you had an issue about...
Right.
And if you want to amend, make a motion, uh, if someone makes that motion, you can make a substitute motion to state that they be engaged only after, um, Cook and Morehart come up to do item number ten, which is the additional agreed-upon procedure.
And I'm with Denise on that. I think the audit needs to take place before you hire somebody to clean everything up, make it through.
It was supposed to be Cook and Morehart, Castellano, and then Cook and Morehart.
Right.
In that order.
Exactly.
I don't know, us talking about any order or any...
We're not trying to break the order right now.
The Castellano will come in and aid whoever our bookkeeper is to make sure everything's in order so that...
But we need a bookkeeper first, which we don't have.
And I agree. Um, but I think what y'all want to do is make that motion that Castellano, Castellano and Associates be engaged, would only be engaged...
After number ten has been performed and completed.
If you'll make that motion, then we'll back your up.
Okay, then I, I, I'm going to just talk to the public for just a minute because I, I mean, you know, they need to be involved in this. Basically, what has happened is we met with Cook and Morehart and discussed what actions we need to take to rectify what has happened. I mean, we, our books are in a mess. We don't know the extent of the damage, nor will we know that until this has been done. So what I'm suggesting, and I've spoke with most of the council, Raymond, I know you worked, I didn't talk to you today, but what I've suggested and we've agreed upon is that we will have Cook and Morehart come and perform these additional agreed-upon procedures to kind of find out where we're at as far as what's happened. Then we will hopefully in this, in the meantime, get a bookkeeper hired. Then we will have Castellano and Associates come in to work with our bookkeeper to try to get our funny, our books where they need to be because as of right now, we cannot even have an audit. I mean, Cook, they've told us they will not even come in here until our books are ready to be audited. Then, once we've gotten a bookkeeper, Castellano comes in, then Cook and Morehart will come back and do our audit, hopefully sooner than usual. But that will depend on what is done and how fast this goes. So basically, what I'm going to make a motion to do is that we, whoever, I mean, Judy, if you're comfortable signing this engagement letter because it's what we need to do, is that Judy will sign the engagement letter with Cook and Morehart, which is number ten on our agenda, to do that first.
You want to vote on that one first or?
Yeah, I'm making the motion, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. To do Cook and Morehart first, to do the agreed-upon procedures. Then, once they're complete, then to hire Castellano and Associates, once our bookkeeper has been hired, and then for Cook and Morehart to be hired to do our normal audit. You reworded for me.
Yeah. Let me think for a second. So I think probably the best thing to do on the item, because we're really on item number eight. The motion should be that Castellano and Associates be engaged to provide the assistance to the camp, to the town for the county records, but they will only be allowed to come do work. After Cook and Morehart perform the additional agreed-upon procedures as listed in item number ten.
Right.
So that will go on eight and then it will come to nine and then it will come to...
Okay.
What are the additional agreed-upon procedures? What are, what's different from that?
We're going to, I'll try to address that in a few minutes.
Okay, he's going to address that.
So the motion is made by Denise Alexander to engage Castellano and Associates for the purposes of providing assistance to the town's accounting records.
Mm-hmm.
Make sure they're ready for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen audit and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute engagement letter with understanding that they will not begin any work or services until Cook and Morehart have performed additional agreed-upon procedures as listed in number item ten.
Correct.
And you and I, I'll have to work with my troops to get that. So the motion's been made.
Can I, I just want, and I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in this, but I mean, I'll just ask you a question. If Castellano and Associates agrees to do this and you agree to hire them, and we have a temp brought up here soon. I mean, I said we needed a temp last Thursday. So do you not feel comfortable getting Castellano?
No.
Okay, that would be fine. I was just looking for a backup for a temp that is going to have a clue what's going on in that office, but...
What are these additional procedures, Doug?
Jim, if you would, please, uh, ask this.
Doug said he wanted to explain it to us.
So you got a motion to second also?
A motion? Okay. Does everybody understand exactly where we're, all in favor?
All in.
Any opposition? So now, which number do we go on to here?
And once they, we're trying to ensure that you understand because I have to look at Vivian's. So you move on to number nine now?
Okay.
I have a recording, Doug, just in case.
Do what?
I have a recording going, so...
So the next one will, we will, this will be to authorize Cook and Morehart to perform our annual audit and also to, uh, do the statewide agreed-upon procedures. And again, I don't know if you remember, it started last year. The state has made things way more complicated than they already were. So the information, the state, the information for the statewide agreed-upon procedures is a new requirement by the legislative auditor. Do I have a motion and a second to engage Cook and Morehart to perform our seventeen, eighteen audit and also the agreed-upon statewide procedures for the town of Vivian, authorizing me to sign and execute the two engagement letters? Do I have a motion and a second to accept this?
I make a motion with the addition that this letter of engagement will not be, it will be done in the order that I've suggested.
Okay.
How much is this going to cost us?
A lot.
Fifty thousand?
No. Don't know that.
Right now, we really don't know. Because we don't know what we're going to have to actually get into.
Okay, you know, auditors can't audit your own work, so that's why you got to have Castellano in there. Cook and Morehart can't do the work that we paid a bookkeeper or whoever.
Exactly, and they're not going to.
So now we got to get somebody else to come in and do the work that should have been done.
Exactly.
And they knew this, the auditors knew this when they came and did the auditor last year.
Right.
Several months ago.
Right. We're doing what the legislative auditors have suggested that we do. I mean, we're, we're, we're doing, as a council, we're trying to do what we've been instructed to do.
Do we have a motion and a second to engage Cook and Morehart?
We've done all we can do.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Okay, I want to make sure, get your, so you made the motion to engage Cook and Morehart to do the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen audit, authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the two engagement letters based upon it being done in order of ten, eight, nine.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, do we, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so now we are...
Hold on a second.
Ten. The Board of Aldermen is, again, consider engaging Cook and Morehart to perform our additional agreed-upon procedures, authorizing the mayor Pro Tem to sign and ex, execute the engagement letter after review and approval of the town attorney. Doug, I'm going to pass you the ball. Is this...
That's good. So this is where I wanted to explain to the city council, and I've either spoken to y'all by phone or met with you guys personally. We did have a meeting with the CPA and we couldn't have the whole council there, but certain ones were there. I also wanted to be able to let the public know what we've done and where we're going from this point. So on August third, two thousand eighteen, the bookkeeper was arrested by the Vivian Police Department and charged with malfeasance of office and also authorized use of an access card. These charges were forwarded to the Kettle Parish District Attorney's Office. On this date, I also met with the mayor and he advised me of the situation. In addition, he'd already spoken to and been in contact with our CPA firm. Pursuant to Louisiana law, the legislative auditor in the Kettle Parish District Attorney's Office is required to be notified when such, any type of misappropriation is handled to this man. On August seventh, which was a following Tuesday, because it was late Friday when I found out all this, I sent a letter certified mail to the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office and also the Kettle Parish District Attorney's Office advising them of the charges and the alleged misappropriation. I think it's important to note there are two issues here. One of the issues is the alleged misappropriation of the credit card, which was promptly, which was promptly investigated and handled by the Vivian Police Department in a very expeditious manner, in my opinion. And there is also the issue of perception of issues regarding the town's books. There's been no direct evidence of any wrongdoing or other misappropriation, but obviously there is a perception, perception that there are things to be looked at and what we need to do and consider good business practice when you have an incident, incident that we've had in turnover of two high-ranking employees in town business. On August sixth, backing up, I meant this was the money, before I sent the letter out. I spoke with the Kettle Parish Assistant District Wilmer Pryor and also personally spoke to Kettle Parish District Attorney Judge Stewart. They indicated that their office did not perform or have any forensic CPAs and they were not really going to come in here and do an audit because I know a lot of people in the public were saying, why didn't the sheriff come in? Why didn't the district attorney come in? Why don't the legislative auditor come in and perform a audit? They're not going to do that, okay? I also spoke with Ryan Nelson, the chief, on that day. He had spoken with the white-collar, white-collar crime division for the Kettle Parish Sheriff's Office. They basically ended, indicated the same thing, that they would not be performing the audit. That probably the best thing to do would be to have our own CPA firm come in and perform some type of audit issue and if there were irregular, irregularities or some type of misappropriation, if it was found out, again, we don't know if anything like this has been done, not suggesting it had, but there obviously is perception and concern from you as a city council person and obviously the public. On the next day, August seventh, two thousand eighteen, I spoke with Lauren Watley, Louisiana Legislative, Legislative Auditor's Office. We met you all since yesterday. She indicated unless we had some direct evidence that the books had been altered, her money was missing or some type of large misappropriation, they would most likely not be coming in to perform any type of audit. They did indicate if they're, if they ever did come in and perform an audit, they would not charge the town. That was one of the things...
Right.
I wanted to, uh, ask them. She's, uh, suggested, based upon what I told her with regards to the alleged credit card misappropriation and also the turnover, was to have our CPA firm come in and do some type of audit procedure and if there was a misappropriation or money missing or some type of issue, then they needed to be immediately contacted at that time, that they may come in and do an audit at that time, uh, just depending on what the CPA found and what, to what extent. On Wednesday, August eighth, two thousand eighteen, I met with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Eugene Wilson, Alderman Denise Alexander, uh, Travis Morehart and Vicky Case with our CPA firm. The purpose of the meeting was to develop a strategic plan on how to go forward with the processes due to these issues that have come to light. It was decided, at least it's my understanding it was decided, these are the things that we, we would do. Number one, it was decided to appoint Eddie Williams as interim clerk until the election be held. We just voted on that. Number two was decided that it is extremely important to get a good big bookkeeper for the town of Vivian upon the advice of the CPA firm, appears to be the best option at this time, to hire a bookkeeper from a temporary agency. The mayor has contacted Gene Simpson today and is in the process of trying to obtain a bookkeeper for the town of Vivian. This would not, this will not be a permanent hire, okay? This will not be a permanent hire. It would be an individual that hopefully can come to Vivian and provide the necessary services until a permanent bookkeeper could be hired. Uh, it's my understanding, talking to Travis Morehart and Vicky, that they will and we can request that they do a good background check on anybody. They're not really hired. We are contracted with Gene Simpson, so if the person comes up here one day, we don't like him, we call him and say, bring somebody else, or a week or so to that extent.
They're doing all of that?
Yes, yes. Uh, but we're probably going to have to pay a little bit more than what we had paid previous for the bookkeeper. Number three was decided that Castellano and Associates would be engaged to make sure all our records are posted and review work of the bookkeeper to make sure the books are ready for audit by Cook and Morehart. And number four, Cook and Morehart will perform an additional agreed-upon procedures and authorizing the mayor Pro Tem to sign and execute engagement letter after review and approval of the town attorney because we've yet to see the engagement letters have been approved.
Right.
Cook and Morehart will come in and review all transactions and accounting records from the date of employment to the date of, date of termination of the bookkeeper. In addition, they will report additional procedures due to the turnover of the clerk's position and both positions really. They have indicated that they will be able to begin the process within the next two weeks, actually, I think it's two weeks from August ninth. So they're going to be able to come up here and do some audit procedures on the bookkeeper. That is what item number ten is, and that's what y'all are going to vote on today to allow them to come up here and start this process. Now, if you ask me how much it's going to cost, I don't know. I think they, they thought on some hourly figures, but...
Can I say something, Doug? Some of what Cook and Morehart will be doing, they won't have to do again when they come to do the final audit, is what Vicky told me, that it... Some of the, what they're going to perform will...
Help them.
Will help them in the final audit and it won't take as long for the final audit. Does that make sense to y'all?
Judy, that's, that's normal. You do an interim, they come down to interim and do some things, but then they come back then here.
Right, right. That's exactly what they're going to do.
It's just a normal procedure on an audit.
Yeah, yeah.
One, one other thing I forgot. When they come back and do the record audit, they will also expand those audit procedures into anything that we deem appropriate to be done. But the bottom line is this, which is really important. The sheriff's office is not going to come over here and take our computers and start looking at them. The district attorney's office is not going to take our computers and start looking at us. The legislative auditor is not going to come up here. What they're really wanting us is for our auditors to come up here and see something. If they did see something, then that would be turned over.
To the legislative auditor.
If nothing is done, at least hopefully they can get the books.
Right.
So they can be audited. Normally, they come up here in October, November, but, and hopefully, we'll have everything ready for them by that time, we just don't know yet. But, we've gotta get a bookkeeper, and we've gotta get, you know, hopefully our books ready.
Doug, having that credit card be outstanding when that Ash Park left a year and a half ago, how could that still be floated around the offices?
I don't know, you have to ask the mayor or somebody.
Have a question, Mayor?
What was that?
The credit cards that the bookkeeper was arrested for using, you know, look, I mean-
It, it was my understanding, Jim, that the mayor had instructed that credit card to be, to shore up the issue. Uh, I know that the, um, police department had a credit card in, uh, prior, prior bookkeeper's name, and I think Ryan got that taken care of, but for some reason, this credit card just wasn't done, even though you had instructed it to be done. That's the best I can explain it.
Who did you instruct to destroy that card, Mayor?
I'm sure I instructed the, the last clerk. I'm sure I instructed the last clerk.
The last clerk?
The last clerk, yes. So, Doug, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't have, I, I, I try to do the best I can for you guys, I've spoken to you, and hopefully this notifies the public too. Why did our clerk quit?
Well, you know, James, there's, there's an awful lot of yin yang out there, but the bottom line was, she'd been talking about leaving for six months. You know she was stalked, she was sort of ridiculed, I don't know if it was a Afro-American thing, I'm not sure.
Oh, please. No, 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 no.
But, if you, if you would-
Really?
You would just keep this in mind, if she had stayed one more day, she was going to have to pay her landlords, Serge and Dorothy Malmes-
Oh, my gosh.
Another $675. Eight days after she left, her six-year-old needed to be in school somewheres. And then, I don't know if you all find this interesting, Jim might, you know, she was so corrupt and crooked in her last position, they ran her off from Windsboro, but somehow Monday morning, she started back there as their administrative assistant.
Not that, that's about it.
So, anyhow, anyhow, that's the all, the only thing that I have to add to this. I'm gonna agree 100% with, with whatever the council's process is, and-
I have one question. Did she turn in her receipts?
Yes, she did.
All of her receipts?
Actually, actually, I put a file in somebody's hands, a folder in somebody's hands, that had all of her, uh, the receipts, and actually, I think there was two other things, I think that was for Jim. She put in her receipts of when she had her license plate renewed.
No, I was talking about when she went to the conference session.
No, I, I, it's all in a folder somewheres.
And you don't know where that folder is?
Well, we'll find it, I'm sure. No, I, you know, actually-
We'll find it, you're sure? We have-
Anyhow, if, if we could, let's, let's try to wrap this up.
Well, I'm gonna respond to that, number one. I cannot believe that you said what you just said.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, really.
Okay.
You don't want to put your name on an engagement letter, but you're gonna sit here in a public meeting and accuse the town and this council of saying that the reason why she left may have had something to do with the fact that she was African-American, really?
I wasn't really accusing anybody in particular.
Did you just make that statement?
I did, yes, I did. And I don't have a problem with that statement.
Well, you should, because that has absolutely nothing to do-
Anyhow-
No, we cannot.
Can we, can we wrap this up?
No, no, no. If you want to wrap it up, then resign. If you cannot take the heat, resign.
I've made 44 meetings. I've made 44 meetings.
If you cannot take the heat, it's time for you to step down.
Maybe it is, but it's past that.
There's no maybe about it.
Okay, but, thank you for that.
You will not even sign an engagement letter to do what is best for this town, because you're going, you're gonna defend her, for what reason?
Hey, I'm agreeing with everything you want to do, I have no problem with it.
But you won't sign a letter.
I don't want to sign, I don't feel comfortable in it, if you don't-
Well, there's a lot of things that we don't feel comfortable with, but we don't have a choice in the matter.
Okay.
It's your job. Do you not agree that it's your job to sign this engagement letter?
We have a mayor pro temp that is very capable of doing-
That is here for the, for the reason-
Is this what we all already, y'all already voted on, that you're saying, that you're talking about?
No, we've not voted on it yet.
Okay.
Call the meeting to order and ask for a motion and stuff.
Could I please call the meeting to order, and could I get a motion and a second to, we need to, uh, request a motion and a second engaging Cook and Moore Heart to perform the additional agreed procedures, and authorizing the mayor pro town to sign and execute the engagement letter?
Doug, do I need to recuse myself from the vote?
Yes, after the review of the approval of the town attorney.
I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote.
I will make the motion as I have specified in the last two.
That the procedure be item number 10 comes first.
Right.
Item number eight, and then item number nine.
Right.
But I do not have to recuse myself?
I can recuse myself from that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And moving on to our last, this would be the introduction of ordinance number 710, Debbie Williamson will be receiving a raise to 1650 per hour. To avoid any issues, I have already given her this raise in her current position as water clerk, effective today. Then obviously, we'll have to have an ordinance on her compensation, and the ordinance will reflect the compensation of 1650 an hour.
Can I hand out everybody a copy of that?
Can I make that motion?
It's just introduced, we'll have to vote on it, thanks.
Then, due to the fact that the clerk has resigned, we need to remove her from these accounts. Do I have a motion and a second to remove Sharlika Taylor as a signature and/or authorized signer on all bank accounts, financial accounts, credit cards, or any other accounts in the name of the town of Vivian?
Can I make that motion?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to authorize Debbie Williamson as the signature to sign and/or authorized signer on all bank accounts, financial accounts, credit cards, and any other accounts in the name of the town of Vivian?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two more things. Number 14, the Board of Aldermen will consider authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the L-GAP grant for the town. Again, I think we have that in your folder, it explains what that is, so everybody out there knows, it, again, it is free money.
It's an application.
Application to-
What is this money for?
One-
This free, this free money?
One will provide, uh, an aeration system for our sewer plant.
Is this the grant we were denied in the-
No, it's not.
Beginning of the year?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And the other one will help us pay for a road. Right now, we are, uh, access to one of our lift stations, we are crossing Bill and Bo Parker's property. They've been gracious enough with some occasional mention, but I don't know how long their graciousness is gonna carry on. So, we, we're gonna build a road in, not asphalt, but access from a different direction. And this L-GAP, I believe, can pay for all of that, and then the, well, that's coming up, the CWEF grant will take care of the aeration system over at the sewer plant. So, this is one of two grants that we're trying to make applications for, I need a motion and a second authorizing me to make application for the L-grant, L-GAP grant. Do I have a motion and a second?
I make that motion. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the, the next one, this is for the CWEF grant, this is, uh, again, this is the second of two grants that we're trying to make applications for. I need a motion and a second authorizing me to make an application for the CWEF grant.
I make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I'm afraid to ask this, but does anybody have any announcements?
I have one.
Okay.
Um, and I, most of y'all know, school just started today. Yeah, and I know some of y'all are just really excited. Um, next Tuesday, on the 21st, we will have Meet the Rebels slash a meeting greet, we're actually combining our, um, normal Meet the Rebels outdoor pep rally to introduce like the football team and all that stuff, with our back-to-school night. So, we're gonna start off with the pep rally, I think there's gonna be some dinner options and that stuff, so if you kind of look for Facebook and our website, that stuff will be posted, it starts at 6 o'clock next Tuesday.
You know, actually, we, we did have some very positive things here lately, I don't know if you all are aware, but we had the, a week ago Saturday, we had the back-to-school up the Legion Hills, passing out the backpacks and school supplies. There was supposedly an amazing turnout, passed out an awful lot of supplies. I think the Friday prior to that, Cattle Parish Parks and Recreation and the Cattle Parish Sheriff's Department came up to the swimming pool, and we had a full house from 9:00 in the morning until, I believe, 10 or 11 o'clock at night, with free swim, movie night, uh, hamburgers, hot dogs, so there, there still is, uh, good going on around here. So, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Can I say?
Sure.
I just want to ask, till it, I know everybody probably already know, we lost our long time, just a piece, uh, these-
Former city council-
City council. I think your service, what you're called, your service is gonna be, it's two P U, I just, you know, extra back to paper.
Okay.
You're gonna be tomorrow at 9:00, 6:00, 8:00. David, you should be starting to text me by this right now.
Okay. So now, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I make that motion. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to ask, skip a one.